Go ahead and call a meeting to order. If you would, please rise. Pastor Zunica from New Life Chapel, if you would, please come lead us in our invocation.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. I'd just like to read, "As God governs and interferes with men, and if a sparrow cannot fall to the ground without his notice, it is probable that an empire cannot rise without his aid." Heavenly Father, we are so thankful, God, that as we are journeying through this land called earth, God, that we're not alone, and that you're here with us, Lord God, and that we would learn to recognize that. Father, we're here in the great community of the Permian Basin, God, Odessa, Texas, God, Ector County, and Father, we're so thankful for each servant, God, that is before us here today. Father, we recognize, God, that where they're at, you have allowed them to be, God, for the influence of your kingdom. And so, Father, I just lift each one of them up, God, from our CD second chairman, Ms. Norma, Larry Long, Malcolm Hamilton, Dewey Bryant, David Turner, God, Barbara Graff, God, Michael Gardner, Filberto Gonzalez, Michael Marero. Father, each one of them, God, are helping conduct the business of here in Odessa, Father. And Father, we believe that it's an anointing that you have allowed of them, God. It's borrowed, God, it's not owned. And so, Father, we just pray for each one of them a special covering, God, as they are leading our city here, God. And Father, we just pray for God-like wisdom, God, for each one of them, not earthly wisdom, but God-like wisdom, God. And so, Father, we just pray, God, that as they're making decisions, God, they're accessing you and your power, God. We have to believe, Lord God, that this is a great community that you have allowed us to be, God. And Father, we are allowed to come together here to do business for you and your kingdom and help each one of us, including each one that has represented you today, make good and wise choices for your glory and for your honor. We pray that in the wonderful name of the Lord Jesus Christ. And everybody say amen.
Thank you very much, Pastor. This time, council member Gonzalez will lead us in the place.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On my Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
He may be seated. Okay, there are no proclamations or awards or presentations, so we will move to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed as unanimous. Move to other council actions under bid awards. Consider a bid award for the reconstruction of West 23rd Street, current highway to Andrews Highway. Erwin.
If you're the mayor, if you're the mayor of council, this far, I'm just considering a bid for reconstruction of West 23rd Street from current highway to Andrews Highway. The bids were opened on November 14, 2017. We had two bids for this project. The lowest responsive bidder was Insalbert in demand of $456,666. The tower estimate for this project was $558,000. The purpose of this project is to reconstruct approximately 6,000 to 1,000 square yards of roadway, improve drainage, install concrete valleys, and better fuel. The city staff have reviewed the bids and recommend ordering the contract with Insalbert in demand of $456,666. Are there any questions?
Can we explain how that fits in with Odessa College?
We will maintain only access to the construction. There's only one parking lot that has access to the entrance street, and it will be maintained to be the construction. I mean, the contract.
Okay, any other question? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed as unanimous. Item two, consider a bid award for the Dixie 18-inch transmission water line. Erwin.
The bids for this project were opened on November 14, 2017, and four responsive bids were submitted for this project. The lowest responsive bidder was Adra Don Madrid and Associates in demand of $2,000,010,573.67. The purpose of this project is to install approximately 11,000 feet of 18-inch water line as an additional feeder for the upper pressure plane. And the new line will improve the flow and the balance between the supply and demand for the alternate cord of the upper pressure plane. The city staff have reviewed the bids and recommend ordering the contract with Adra Don Madrid and Associates in demand of $2,000,010,573.67.
Okay, are there any questions? And if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed as unanimous. Thank you. Next, to the public hearings. Item three, we'll open a public hearing to consider the approval request by Sherwood Christian Academy. Owner Johnny Fayle, board of directors, representative, agrees on from single-family three to retail. Mr. Brinkley.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The city made up one notice related to this case. This notice was not returned and we did not receive a response positive or negative related to the request. This is the second reading of this request, and the council did approve the first reading of the request back on November the 14th of this year. The property involved in the request is located in the 5600 block of Victor Avenue. The site is currently zoned single-family three, and it is the site of the Sherwood Christian Academy. Land use in the area does consist of a large drainage area to the south of this property, and the remaining adjacent properties are located outside the city. And it's put the land use on these properties as a combination of a single-family residential mobile home and commercial and light industrial type developments mixed use in this area. The applicant and property owner is the Sherwood Christian Academy. Johnny Fayle is their representative, and the purpose of the zone change request to retail would allow a more efficient use of the property, and it would also enable the school to better market and sell their property for future developmental purposes. The subject area is located in the northern part of the city's future land use. This is considered one of the prime growth areas for low-density residential development, open space and parkland, and as well as commercial and retail development that would be adjacent to Slaymar Field or county airport up in this area. The zoning request for this site is consistent with the city's priority for attractive, safe, and context-sensitive roadways to be taken into consideration with the related uses. And further information that we've received from the applicant is that this will be marketed as a light retail type use or a daycare center, something like that. It'll be a low-impact type activity on this property. And this is also taken into account, the site would not adequately accommodate a major traffic generator as part of the market as a light impact use. And interest in this site would reflect the access in adjacent street restrictions. Planning and zoning commission did give a unanimous approval of this request, and the planning staff does concur with this recommendation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
Yeah. Randy, do we have any idea what they want to put there as retail?
No, ma'am, not at this time. Like I said, it wouldn't be just a light retail use. It wouldn't be anything intensive. There's just...
Will the neighbors have any say-so about what goes in there?
Well, the neighbors are all outside the city, isn't it? So there wouldn't be any notification on that. And like I said, between where this property is located and any property to the south that is inside the city limits, you've got about a pound of drainage area in there. So there is a massive separation.
Any other questions? Okay, well, this is a public hearing, so at this time, we'll open up the floor for anyone who would like to comment on this agenda item. If you would, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed as unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Brinkley. Item four, open a public hearing to consider an ordinance amending into the city of Odessa approximately 206.53 acres of land in section 35. Mr. Long.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a topic that the council has heard several times already due to the public hearings, but the map that has shown up there indicates that the Hurt family through BTO is wanting to do the northernmost portion of 206 acres as residential housing, and they have requested to come in. We also have, Dr. Diaz has requested 4.4 acres for retail, and I think if you could just show him the... This is an artist's rendering of what he hopes to build there as a proposal. It is just generally a retail space without being allocated at this time to any particular There had been a question about the entranceway, if you go back to that one deal, to Fodry Road, and it is going to be governed by, it'll be Mr. Kerr, who's our director of public boards, who will determine where the entrances and exits to that will be. So we should be covered on that. If you would go to the second. And this last one, or this one, is the right-of-way that the county currently owns that is immediately adjacent to the property that is being developed by CVS as a pharmacy, and they had requested, and we concur that we need to have that right-of-way so it can be evolved to the city's standards.
Are there any questions?
On that right-of-way, I see Gus is here, but I know that we're going to be putting a, what's it called?
CVS.
A CBS. And I live by there all the time, so I was kind of like, okay, how are they going to do the parking? And it, that really looked kind of small. Can you explain that to me a little bit more about how that's going to work? Did we, we're kind of agreeing with on four about parking under their way, or?
Mr. Brinkley.
I'm not going to have an op test, I have studied a little bit more.
Well, it's just that, you know, like I said, I drive by it all the time, and I compare it to all the other CVSs in town, and you see their parking.
Yes, sir.
And I go shopping at that HEB all the time, and there's a lot of people there, and I can kind of see that parking lot being full also. And the way it's set out, and then just this easement that we're talking about, to me, it doesn't sound that big.
Yeah, well, the easement is strictly just a, an access to the property. The property itself has adequate space for the building and for their parking, required parking, that will be located on the property. This is strictly just a street that the city is going to take over, and we will maintain and actually have the street so we can have the access coming off of this street instead of the service road from the Loop and from West University. And the parking will be located more to the east and north part of the building, and the building will be located more towards the front of the property, kind of what we've been pushing for in the new comp plan, is not emphasized, most parking in the front, but...
How long would it be before we see a building and parking how it's offered?
Ah, it should be just after the first year submitted for plans, because I, real quick, and I think this is part of it, is getting this done to where they'll have access to it, but it should be right after the first year.
Thank you, Mr. Brinkley.
Yes, sir.
Well, I have one question on the, on the first one. Does that, is it... I'll pay you some, I'll look out there. Does, is this going to bring 100 Street, will this incorporate part of that coming into the...
Yes, sir.
So it's plotted in?
Yes, sir.
Very, it'll be built in this?
What will happen on this one, the overall development out here, this will probably be the first concept that we have also under the comp plan of where the overall development will come in as a master plan by the developer, and he's going to tell us, this is what I'd like to do, and we tackle all the problems at the first and address it as a whole instead of coming at it piecemeal. And it's just a whole lot better concept to be able to do things that way. And this will be that, we will...
It will be part of that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Very good.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, so at this time, we'll open up the floor for anyone who would like to speak on this agenda. Item number seven, if you would, please come forward. Seeing none, we have a motion.
So moved.
Second, any more discussion? Okay, none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Next, under ordinance. Consider authorizing the abandonment of a portion of Lover's Lane. Mr. Long.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and this will be, I'm sure, shortly, but there has for a while now existed a problem with the traffic circulation and with drainage and for just proper use of the property on the, at Lover's Lane and Loop. And this is an attempt, well, it's not an attempt, it resolves it. We're, we'll delineate 20-foot alley for the city to use as surface steel. It'll maintain the proper drainage. It'll allow Mr. Uranga, which is the adjacent property owner, the use of the property to develop the business, and will generally just rectify any number of areas. So we would recommend that it be for us to be...
Okay, are there any questions here, council? And if not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Item six, considering ordinance amending building permit fees and associated fees. Ms. Shaw.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As we talked earlier in the year, maybe last year, about... My presentation isn't on here. No problem. Amending the permit fees, they haven't been amended since at least the mid-'90s, the best we can determine. I provided for you a comparison, and it's also out there on the front table for anybody that's interested, of our existing fees and our proposed fees. As far as where our cities will be, we'll be mostly in line with San Angelo and Abilene on our residential. We'll be a little under the average as far as commercial goes until we get into some of the larger commercials, and then we'll be a little higher than average. An average-sized house in the city of Odessa right now, a permit with the proposal, will cost you about $250, which is, it's about double. We're going up from $28.50 to $50. $28.50 plus .063 cents a square foot to $50.12 a square foot. So it's a significant increase, but it's not out of line with the surrounding areas and the area average. As far as commercial, we're going to go up to $1,000, and then point 12 cents a square foot. And then additionally, every other permit fee we have will be going up. Electrical, we're adding some new fees. We're going to be adding a fee for satellite towers and cell towers, which we've never had that. We didn't need it in the, I guess, in the early '90s, the last time we had it. So we're adding some new fees, we're deleting some unnecessary fees. But the comparison, I think, shows you everything that we're adding versus what we're taking away, and then what our final list will look like. Be happy to answer any questions you have on that.
Okay, any questions?
When was the last time you had a fee increase?
The last one, I think Norma was able to find, was early '90s, maybe '93, somewhere around there. So it's needed, and it's to stay in line, to recoup some of our costs. We'll also do a, going forward, we're going to try to do a really good job of tracking our revenue. Of course, our revenue is going to ebb and flow with development, and our personnel is not, so it's going to be a problem becoming a self-sufficient department, but Mr. Moreau has tasked me with trying to at least equalize that some, so we're paying our own way a little bit.
Okay, any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion. You have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next, consider an ordinance adopting 2018 fuel and gas code.
Your presentation's on there. It's a little obscure, but it's on there.
Okay, so, there's what I just told you. Thank you, I'm sorry, it's the color, obviously. Okay, the first one, the item number seven we have is adoption of the 2012 fuel gas code. Again, last year, when I discussed changing the codes, we were in the '06 code. We talked about adopting 2012 codes for one year to give us a stopgap to get to the 2018 code. Today, I'd like for you to adopt the 2018 codes so that we're current with the most modern and the most up-to-date codes. And this is international code, so it's not state of Texas or anything like that. This is where everybody should be. And again, this first one is the fuel gas code. If you would entertain that, I would appreciate it.
Okay, any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Item eight, considering the ordinance adopting 2018 mechanical codes.
This, again, is the exact same thing. We're going from the 2012 mechanical code to the 2018 mechanical code.
Okay, any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Considering ordinance adopting 2017 electrical codes.
This is kind of the same thing. Electrical is off a year, they're always behind one year. We were relatively up-to-date with the 2014 code, and they're moving to 17. So that is the most current version, even though it's, will be a year behind on January 1st.
Okay, any questions? Now, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, consider an ordinance adopting 2018 International Property Maintenance Code.
The property maintenance code was new to us. That was our first adoption, was the 2012, and that is the one that is exclusive to the downtown area, so we want to adopt the most current version of that as well.
Okay, any questions? If not, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 11, consider an ordinance adopting the 2018 Energy Conservation Code.
This is the exact same thing, going from 2012 to 2018 on the energy conservation code. Also, the energy conservation code was new to us last year as well, so this is our first update of that.
Okay, any questions? Now, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 12, consider an ordinance adopting 2018 International Plumbing Code.
Again, the same thing, going from 2012 to 2018 on the plumbing code.
Okay, are there any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 13, consider an ordinance adopting 2018 International Resident Presidential Code.
Again, same thing, residential one and two, family dwelling code.
Okay, are there any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 14, consider an ordinance adopting 2018 International Building Codes.
This is our, our primary code book. This is the big one, so we keep that up as well.
Okay, any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 15, consider amending chapter three entitled Building Regulations with City Code Code Ordinances.
This is a new code for us. The existing building code has previously been rolled into the International Building Code. The section got so large that the International Code Council thought it warranted its own code and code book. It's pretty much a necessity for us to adopt this as the International Building Code, continues to reference it as it did when it was part of the, of the larger code. So this will be the first year for us, and we're going to start at 2018 to be up-to-date.
Okay, any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 16, consider an ordinance amending the City Odessa Code of Ordinances, Article 8-2.
Okay, Mayor and Council, currently, our noise ordinance, the earliest hour is 7:00 a.m., and I think we have to end at 7:00 p.m., I guess, I was just thinking the earlier. But this is going to allow the city manager to grant permission to work outside those hours in the cases of urgent necessity in the interest of public safety or for convenience. Currently, the council has that authority, but the problems we're running into is, I need to do that in the morning, or I need this exception next week, and there's not a council meeting in the, in the meantime. So we think it's prudent to give the city manager that authority to make those decisions and decide what's in the best interest of, of the neighboring areas to go outside that ordinance.
Could you explain the purpose?
Sure. The best example I have of it is contractors want to pour concrete early in the morning because they want to get the first, the first pour. They have it coming in three days, and so they call my office and say, can you allow us to work outside the noise ordinance? Currently, I can't do that. I can't, Michael can't do that. They would have to wait for the next city council meeting in order to do that. So what we, what we think we would like to do is have the ability for Mr. Moreau to make that decision, if it's not going to affect any surrounding neighborhoods, or there wouldn't be any pushback, to allow them to do that early morning pour if it's, if it's prudent.
Okay, I got you. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 17, consider amending article 1-1 of the City Odessa Code of Ordinances, entitled Code of Ordinances.
This is the general penalty section, and we've added in the energy code and the existing building code, which were new last year, so we tied it all together so that we can enforce those codes.
Just housekeeping.
It's housekeeping, yes, sir.
Okay, any questions?
I don't, I don't have a question. I, this is a lot of motions, and we've done here, and we have a large audience, and I don't know how they work, but I just don't, if you could explain to them that we have already discussed these in, in intense, you know, so we've asked a lot of questions before, and this is just a preliminary of items that need to be done, so I don't want to claim that we're not, we don't care, or we don't ask questions. Can you explain that a little bit?
Yes, sir. We've gone through the codes with you guys in briefing and things like that, and I don't think anybody was expecting it here. The other thing that we'll do, Mr. Gonzalez, is we'll do a pretty intense public outreach after you guys approve this first reading. We'll go to the Builders Association, we tend on holding a forum here. We have a very extensive email list, so we'll just blast all this information out to everybody that we think might could be affected, so that there's question, an opportunity for the public to ask questions of us as well. My building official is going to be very versed on the changes and be able to explain those to customers very clearly. There's obviously too many changes to go through one by one here, and it does change every three years. So we'll be back here in three years to redo this, but hopefully, we'll do a very good job of doing outreach so that the public is versed on what the changes are and have every opportunity to ask questions and give us input before your second reading.
So this is our first, and then we've got two more, then we've got a few from one more.
Yes, sir.
Well, my question is, are you going to have a grace period?
Yes, ma'am. Anytime a new code is enacted, we're aiming for January 1st here, there's always a six month grace period. So if you have something on the drawing board, or if you have a small project in the back of your mind, there's sufficient time to get that in, get it into us, and we've always accepted a newer code, so if we were on 26, we would accept 2012. But after that six-month grace period, we won't be able to go back, but we will give you that timeframe to get anything in that you would like.
Thank you.
Well, simply, council's been playing catch-up. Two years ago, we were still looking at 2006 codes.
Yes.
Um, which we needed to be up to date. Uh, so over the last two years, we went to 2012s to make it half the way. And now, we're taking it to the most current, which is where we need to be, um, so...
Yes, and Mr. Gonzalez, in keeping with your comments, uh, several of the city staff members have met with the, uh, department in question. And I know the legal department has had various meetings with them too, to go over the ver- various elements and the things that we were considering and were fearful of. And so there has been a lot of work that has been put in on this. And you're right, I mean, it may give the appearance that we're just running through this, nothing could be further from it.
It's not a simple process at all.
Thank you.
I commend you did a good job earlier.
Yes, great job.
I think you bring that up too.
Well, I believe she...
It is a lot of work.
I'll agree with all the work that you've done, I mean, you've done a lot of work to this, so...
Well, when you guys are versed on what we're doing, it's, it's a joint effort, so we appreciate the support for sure.
Any other comments, question?
Unless...
If not, I will entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion in the second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, remember resolutions, uh, number eighteen, consider the request of Odessa Council for the Arts and Humanities for the design rendering and artist approval for the Cloth World sign. Mr. Hannah.
I'm not gonna make you guys wait while I set up my easels, I'm just sitting here. Uh, Mr. Mayor and members of council, thank you so much for allowing us to address you this evening. Before I begin, I would like to recognize the members of the Public Art Committee and Odessa Council for Arts and Humanities who are here tonight, they'll stand to be recognized. Uh, also, Councilman Graff, who's been serving on that committee as well, thank you so much for doing this, uh, they're all here to support what we are very, very excited about tonight. As you know, when we began the, uh, Public Art Master Plan and we went out into the community, uh, and started talking to members of the public about what they wanted to see in their own community in terms of public art, almost every single meeting we went to, somebody said, would you do something with the Cloth World sign? It's just falling down, it's, it's an eyesore, but it's an Odessa icon. Anyone that's grown up here knows the Cloth World sign. And there, there was a lot of love and respect for that. So as we, uh, adopted the plan and started looking at our first projects, uh, that was one of the first things we did. And, uh, I also want to, uh, commend, uh, Dick Gillum and Austin Keith, because that piece of property was not city property. And as you know, from reading the, the master plan, that we are only responsible for, uh, art that is on city property. And so, uh, a lot of negotiations took place and we were able to get that sign as a piece of, of city property. And then we opened a call for artists and over seventy-seven artists from all over the United States and also one from London, all vied for the, uh, honor of transforming the Cloth World sign into a piece of art that, uh, we feel will be a beacon for Odessa. And after looking at our three finalists, we settled on artist Ray King from Philadelphia, who is an internationally recognized artist. And, uh, you've seen this, but I also wanted to just, it's so inspiring to look at, so, uh, this right here is the design. It's the Odessa Spider, I'm gonna turn around, my bad light. And, uh, we are just really thrilled, uh, for many, many reasons, it's a very impactful design. Um, it's also very cost-effective, uh, Mr. King was the only artist that came in exactly on budget. Uh, and it also respects the architecture of the piece. So the people that grew up here and are looking at it can still recognize it as the Cloth World sign. And what we've done is we've taken a piece of Odessa history, uh, and made it relevant. It's going to be a beacon for downtown, uh, and we're very, very proud of that. So tonight, we're asking for the next step in the process, before we do any more work, before anything else is done, we would like approval from the city council to proceed with this particular artist and this selection. And so that's what we're here for and I'm happy to discuss it with you and answer any questions.
Okay, are there any questions or comments?
I have a comment, um, I, I made a reference earlier today that, to me, uh, that's the Odessa I could tell.
It is.
I, I remember as a kid, you know, we'd drive by it all the time and, and so I'm excited about what you've done, the work that y'all put into it, the committee, what the work y'all have done. Uh, so I can't wait to see it, I can't wait to get started on it and I think it's really going to be a positive message for the entire city.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any, any other questions? Okay, if not, I will, uh, entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion in the second, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, coming, uh, number nineteen.
I'd like to take the number nineteen.
Okay, we have a motion to table, do we have a second? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is tabled. Under miscellaneous, uh, move to appointment of boards, um, Ms. Wong.
For the Odessa Development Corporation, reappoint Tam Edgeman.
Okay, uh, do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item twenty-two, consult with the attorney discussing pending litigation with the Odessa American. We need...
Mayor, I, I, I know that you may be emotional, but I'm, I'm vehemently against doing that. I think that this ought to be discussed right here, we can talk to the lawyer right here, it's not anything that needs to be discussed behind closed doors. And I, I see no reason why we should turn into executive session to, uh...
Okay, um...
Any motion for the...
You know, we haven't had a motion made, sure, having to make a motion, that's not even the way I'm having to make.
Mayor, I would respectfully disagree and I, I think we can have the transparency that you're looking for and I really do appreciate what you're trying to achieve, but I don't know that you can really negotiate a settlement with the person listening to your negotiation. So, I would still advise to go into executive session.
Okay.
Is that the person here?
Yes.
Odessa American. So move, a motion to, a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Uh, vote is four to one. Uh, we will go under, into executive session under Texas Government Code, section five thousand one point zero seven one, and we are in executive session at six thirty-nine. Okay, we are now out of, uh, executive session, any motion to come out?
So move.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are now out of executive session at seven forty.
I'd like to make the following motion, Mayor, that council, upon the consultation with our attorney, have directed our attorney to pursue the recommendation from mediator's proposal dated October thirty-first, two thousand seventeen.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
So move.
Have a motion in the second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We do have one, uh, twenty-three on the citizen comment on non-agenda item. We do have, um, Jeff Russell, uh, seventeen oh-three Redbud, would like to come up and speak. Ms. Russell, you have three minutes.
Council, Mayor, I'm Tisha Crowe, I'm the chairman of the Ector County Republican Party. And at our November meeting, we did pass unanimously, and, and a resolution, pardon me just a moment, that Mr. Russell brought to us and it had opportunity to amend, change, do whatever we wanted to do. It was perfectly amenable to everyone on our board that was there to vote that night and Mr. Russell's gonna read that and then he will allow the names who voted on it as well.
Thank you. Uh, we did pass this in the Ector County Republican Party Executive, uh, Committee at our last meeting. Whereas recent decisions by the Odessa City Council have caused harm to the reputation and functioning of our city and whereas current city council members appear to have violated Texas Open Meetings laws and have improperly used executive sessions to conduct business that should have been held in open session and whereas a block of city council members appear to, uh, to be improperly coordinating their efforts, run their own agenda instead of the best interest of Odessa, we, the Executive Committee of the Ector County Republican Party hereby petition the Odessa City Council to fully and completely embrace the spirit of open government embodied by the Texas Open Meetings Act and to conduct city business in executive session only when absolutely required by law, to conduct themselves with honesty and integrity and to refrain from insulting the voters of our county with threatening and offensive language, to promote a positive and professional work environment for all city employees, to work in cooperation with other government agencies and the Odessa Development Corporation to promote the common welfare of our community and to avoid any appearance of conflict of interest or the impression of self, uh, or the impression of the promotion of self-interest in all decision-making. Sign the Ector County Republican Party Executive Committee, Tisha Crowe, Jeff Russell, Terry Pierce, Aubrey Mayberry, Jonell Sims, Javier Hoven, Brandon Pugh, Arlo Schafara, Gary Johnson, Margaret Burden, Judy Callaway, and Dick Salisbury.
Okay.
Counsel can't comment on anything that's not on the agenda, so, um, I was presented with a letter, uh, before council started. Uh, it's, uh, from Larry Long, our city attorney. Says, "Mayor and city council, all good things must come to an end and after thirty years of employment at City Odessa, please accept my resignation as city attorney effective February twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen. It has been an honor to serve City Odessa and citizens and I believe that I am leaving a capable staff containing many projects that are still in process and I will be able to work along them to try to effect an orderly and productive transition. The most difficult part of leaving will be saying goodbye to the many that I have befriended, that have befriended me. I would particularly like to express my appreciation of the mayor and city council for entrusting me with this wonderful job. God bless the United States, God bless Texas, and God bless the city of Odessa. Larry Long." Uh, do you have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.